Regular meeting for October 9, 2017 will please come to order and Ms. Keen, will you please call the roll?
Sure. Linda Cohen.
Here.
Andrea Keen, here. Sarah Johansson.
Here.
Eric Brown.
Here.
Chris McCullough.
Here.
Bonita Lucky.
Here.
Cheryl Polzin.
Here.
And Dr. Anderson.
Here.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, thank you. Our first order of business is to approve the agenda and consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. The consent agenda items are listed in your board packet and the recommended action is to approve the agenda and consent agenda items. So is there a motion?
I so move.
Second. Thank you very much. And Ms. Keen, I think we'll do a roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I did.
Oh, thanks. Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky.
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin.
Yes.
Eric Brown.
Yes.
Andrea Keen.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Chair McCullough.
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, thanks, Ms. Keen. Our next item is reports from organizations and tonight we have Grant Colange. Did I pronounce that right?
Collinge.
Collange. I'll get it. I got plenty of months left to do this, so I guess. So we'll have Grant here to present on behalf of the Wayzata High School Student Council. Thanks.
Hello, once again, everybody. I hope you all had a wonderful month of September. If you weren't here last time, my name is Grant Collange and I'm the student representative from the high school here to update you guys about our busy month of September at the high school. So first of all, and most recently, we had a special event at the high school today. Phil Boit from Learning for Living spent the day at Wayzata High School learning with students on creating a community of care. He held assemblies for the entire sophomore class and another for the junior class. And then during fourth block, he worked with student leaders, including myself, from the class of 2018. The senior leaders were identified by coaches and activity advisors. It was a great experience and we hope to continue working on building a positive school culture at Wayzata High School. Our high school has been very busy over this past month and homecoming 2017 was a huge success. Congratulations to Kai Christensen and Marissa Calcar, who are named homecoming king and queen. The Wayzata High School Community Homecoming Carnival was a great new tradition. Thank you so much to all of you for hosting a booth at the carnival. We got a lot of feedback from community members that they enjoyed the carnival, especially being able to interact with the students rather than just seeing them ride by on a float in the parade. The food trucks were also a huge hit as they sold almost all of their food items. We plan to do the same event next year and we hope you will all come back. It will be on Friday, October 5th of 2018. We hosted a pep fest in the gym this year. It was the first all-school pep fest for the current student body and it went very well. The showstoppers performed, there was a guy-girl dance, and we had a relay activity, and the students beat the staff in the tug-of-war. Older students regarded it as one of the best pep fests of their high school career. Our homecoming dance was held as kickoff to homecoming week and it broke the attendance record as 1,650 students attended the dance and culinary. The dance was a ton of fun. We decided that a kickoff dance is preferred by many students, so we're going to do that same thing next year. In fine arts news, you can purchase tickets now for the 39 Steps and Mary Poppins in our box office section online under current session, current season. Our drama club is also presenting The Man of La Mancha. Go out and see it today. Choir small groups have completed the auditioning process and will begin practicing this week. Be sure to go and see them in the winter classical concerts. In athletics and activities news, both the men's and women's soccer teams are outstanding this year. Men's varsity ended their season with a record of 15 wins, zero losses, and two ties, and the girls' varsity has won 12 games, lost zero, and tied in three. Best of luck to both teams heading into sections. Varsity football is currently 1-5 and looking to turn their season around late. And finally, best of luck to all sports teams as they head into sections. Go Wayzata! With that, my update has concluded. I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have.
All right, thanks, Grant. Any questions? Sarah?
I just have a comment, actually. It was super fun to participate in the carnival. It was really a great time, so thank you all for welcoming us and letting the board crash the party. I'm glad to hear that you got good feedback all around.
Thank you for being there.
All right, thank you very much. And we'll see you next month.
See you next month.
Thanks, Grant. All right, the next item on our agenda tonight is recognitions, and I see we have a few tonight. This is certainly one of our highlights as a school board, so Dr. Anderson, I will turn it over to you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Chase Anderson. I'm the superintendent for the school district, and it's my honor tonight and at all of our regularly scheduled school board meetings for me to convene the recognitions and acknowledgements section of the school board. So we thank you for being here tonight. I know that all of you have very busy schedules and there are a lot of things that you could be involved with tonight, but we're really glad you chose to come and spend some time with us. So our first recognition this evening is we always recognize those who have recently retired and all this, the only person on this list has been on leave for a while, I would like to acknowledge and recognize that Susan Summerfeld, West Middle School principal of 11 years, has retired. And we wish her well and want to thank her for her years of service, 11 years of service to the school district. Even though she's not here tonight, we'll give her a round of applause if she is honored. Next, we would like to recognize our October Employee of the Month, and I would like to invite Kristen Winger to come forward, please. Before we give Kristen an opportunity to make a few comments, I'd like to share these wonderful words of nomination that were submitted on her behalf. "With sincerity and enthusiasm, we recommend Kristen Winger, KP, as East Middle School's October Employee of the Month. We can think of no one more deserving of this recognition. KP has been an amazing teacher and colleague over the last 13 years. She gives so much of herself and is truly an inspiring teacher. She is always patient and kind, especially when working with children who have unique needs. Her students thrive in her classroom. KP has created a safe, creative space for her students where they feel comfortable learning and expressing themselves. Students have shared with other staff that not only is KP their favorite teacher, her class is their favorite to attend. KP immediately connects with her students. She wholeheartedly and genuinely communicates to them that she cares about them. She has the unique ability to connect with students, colleagues, and parents and seems to do so naturally. She has a calm demeanor and a terrific sense of humor. One of the characteristics that makes KP such an impactful teacher is her willingness to go above and beyond what is expected. She involves her entire family in her role as a teacher. Her husband Brad attends the annual Thanksgiving feast she organizes. In this way, students not only get to know Ms. Winger as their teacher, but they have the opportunity to connect with her family as well. By doing this, KP models how important her job is to her and gives a great example of how to integrate professional and family responsibilities. Ms. Winger's entire family attends our school dances. She is always looking for ways to connect with our students and can always be seen at East's charity 5K each spring. We have a tremendous amount of respect and admiration for KP. It is an honor to work with her. The impact she has on our school cannot be easily measured, but is palpable. Congratulations."
Thank you for sharing those kind words. They're so thoughtful. I'm truly honored to receive this award and just always when I asked what district I teach in, I'm so proud to say Wayzata. I'm also extremely privileged to be part of the staff at East Middle School. You know, the past 14 years have grown fond of so many of our wonderful traditions, including our Friday morning staff breakfasts, our annual bowling event, and of course, the social understanding mock Thanksgiving feast. Those are all very important to me. We have quite a wonderful community at East. I also consider many of my colleagues dear close friends. When I'm confronted with both professional and personal challenges, I feel supported by administration, teachers, office staff, peers, and of course, the amazing team members on the special ed team at East. It is truly a team approach and for that, I'm very grateful. I've learned so much from all those I work with and can't imagine teaching in any other environment. My teaching career has become such a significant part of my life and my true passion continues to be the work I do with all my students. I take so much pride in all their growth, progress, and development. But I also would like to just recognize my husband Brad, better known at our school as Bud, for all of his contributions because truly I would not be able to manage my career and my family without all of his support and understanding. So, thank you. I'm so honored to be here.
Our next recognition is in honor of Oakwood Elementary School and their principal and a teacher from the building are here this evening. They've been recognized as a Blue Ribbon School, which is a U.S. Department of Education recognition. And I'd like to share the following and then invite Sarah Beth and Andy up to the podium to share a few thoughts if they would like to. Oakwood Elementary School has been named a 2017 National Blue Ribbon School by the U.S. Department of Education. This award affirms the hard work of students, educators, families, and communities in creating safe and welcoming schools where students master challenging content. "I am proud of the schools this year and those from previous years," said Minnesota Department of Education Commissioner Brenda Casilius. "National Blue Ribbon Schools are active demonstrations of preparing every child for a bright future," said U.S. Secretary of Education Betsy DeVos to the honorees. "You are visionaries, innovators, and leaders." Representatives from Oakwood and the other National Blue Ribbon Schools will be honored at a reception in Washington, D.C. on November 6th and 7th. And at this time, I would like to invite Sarah Beth, the principal, and Andy, a teacher at the building, to come forward and share a few thoughts.
Wow, well, we're thrilled. This is such an honor to be accepting this national award. And I have recently discovered that this is the 35th year that they've been honoring different schools with this award. And so although we've had different leaders and different administrators come through, that they are still recognizing the foundations of excellent teaching and learning. And so we're thrilled to go to Washington, D.C. and be nationally recognized even though this work has been ongoing for years before I was even there and ongoing. So, thank you.
Thank you. I am truly honored to be part of Oakwood's staff and really excited to be traveling to Washington with Sarah Beth and Dr. Anderson. An honor to receive, to represent Oakwood and receive the award, and I'm not surprised. The work that we do at Oakwood in supporting each other translates to the way we take care of our kids. And so it's an honor and a privilege, and I'm so excited that now the nation will know how wonderful Oakwood is.
We would like to remember Wayzata Police Officer William Matthews and the entire police department and thank them for their service to our community. On September 14th, Officer Matthews funeral possession passed by or near four of our schools. Generously, staff at Providence Academy offered to loan flags to Wayzata schools. With the assistance of buildings and ground staff, several hundred flags were placed along the route near our schools. With the tight timeline of events, it would have been very difficult to find adequate flags. We would like to express our appreciation to Providence Academy for helping us to remember Officer Matthews and his family. And our thoughts continue with the Wayzata Police Department and Officer William Matthews' family. Thank you for assisting us with that on that day. Given that, I would again like to thank all of you for being here tonight. Oftentimes, after the recognitions are concluded, I'm able to say it's a beautiful evening out there and plenty of sunlight left. However, we're getting deeper into the fall and closer to winter, and we're just so appreciative, though, that you carved out some time to be with us here tonight. And congratulations to those who were recognized tonight. Hopefully, you can go out and do something fun now and celebrate and enjoy together. And we look forward to many more accomplishments at East and at Oakwood and throughout our school district. So thanks for all of your hard work and we greatly appreciate that. And although you're all more than welcome to stay for the balance of the meeting, oftentimes following the recognitions, which let's face it, that's why most of you are here tonight, people feel free to gracefully exit at this point, so you may feel free to do so or stay and enjoy the rest of the board meeting. Have a great evening and thanks so much. Just wanted to make sure the slide was going to come down.
Oh, here it comes.
Wow, was it something you said? All right. Our next item on the agenda tonight is our student curriculum presentation. It's great to be back in session because we get to hear from all the schools and what's going on. So tonight, we have East Middle School and Dr. Johnson. I'll let you introduce Mr. Patzel and East Middle School.
All right, good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Anderson, it is a pleasure to be back here this evening. I'm imagining very shortly the PowerPoint will actually be up there, but you're familiar with the introduction that we typically give before each site presentation. The purpose of the introduction is to just give you some strategic sense of the work that we're engaged in to help us reach our, the mission and vision of the school district as you've defined it. And as you know, the strategic roadmap guides our work certainly. We use it a lot in our department work and at the site level also. And one of the things that we focus on is the word ensure. That's a very important word to us. It's really our promise to our community of what we hope to achieve for their children. We have six student achievement goals. Four of them are from our strategic directions and the other two emerge from the world of best workforce, but you can see they're ready-for-school achievement. By the end of third grade, there's proficiency, each and every high achievement by all students' subgroups, achievement all students graduate career and college-ready, personalization, helping students understand their unique needs, unique talents. And then last, health and well-being. And so those are four areas that we track and with our scorecard track to measure our progress towards achieving the mission and the vision. And then this map, you're very familiar with our effective practice map, and this is to turn the work to make it real to you. So when someone says, "Well, what are you really doing in a particular area?", we can point to it and say, "This is specifically what we're doing." So this evening, East Middle School will be presenting, and they'll be talking about their student advisory program. And that area focuses in on what we've identified as culture, which is meaningful relationships with teachers, staff, mentors, and peers in a welcoming and nurturing environment where all are valued for who they are and the contribution that they make. And so with that, I would like to introduce to you Mr. Paul Patzel, the principal at East Middle School, who will introduce his team and get the presentation going.
Great, thank you, Dr. Johnson. So, Dr. Anderson, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to have some time on the agenda tonight to share with you one of the many things that are happening at East Middle School that are very exciting and important. As Dr. Johnson pointed out, the strategic roadmap really does drive our work, and every year, we spend a significant amount of time re-identifying the top priorities, the things that we can make small refinements that will have large impact on the success of our students. Some of these things that we are focusing on besides the intense focus on academic achievement and intellectual development are the universal concepts of literacy, making sure that we recognize that there's literacy within each content area as well as literacy across each content area, and focusing how we can help students develop that and communicate and understand better in each of those venues. Also, we're looking at how do we respond when students are not responding to first-time instructions? So we look at the different types of intervention. We look at how do we provide equal opportunities for all students and eliminate barriers because of inequities. We also are looking at how we create that positive culture for learning, which we're using the PBIS framework to do that. And then also a priority for us is looking at not only intellectual development, but character development as well. And how do we strategically really help students develop character strengths at their time at East Middle School? And we believe that's a very important factor in their success, not only in school, but in life in general. So I brought two staff members, fantastic staff members with me tonight, to share with you how we go about doing that. And I think in reality, as I look at Kristen and Rachel and Paula, they're all Packer fans, they had nothing else to do tonight, so I think that might be why. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, but I'm excited to introduce you to Rachel Markoullier, an eighth-grade language arts teacher, and Paula Hen, achievement specialist, who really focuses on character strengths. So Rachel.
Good evening, and thanks for having us here to share something that means so much to our school. Like you said, I am Rachel Markoullier, and I've taught eighth-grade language arts at East for the last 18 years. In that time, our district has remained committed to the middle school model, which is something I personally value as a teacher. I'm a firm believer in the power of middle schools to guide our students through this very challenging time of growth and change. One of the tenets of this model, the middle school model, is advisory. At East, we have chosen to use this advisory time as a means, I'm going to change that quickly, as a means of teaching character strengths through the REACH framework. For those who are unfamiliar with REACH, the acronym is on the screen, but we start with relationships, developmental relationships that express care, challenge growth, provide support, expand possibilities, and share power. The E stands for effort, and we show students what it looks like to persevere through challenges and how to struggle. Cognition focuses on examining their own learning styles and setting goals. Aspirations means showing students the power of education and what possibilities are open to them in their future. Finally, the H is for heart. We help students share and explore the things they are passionate about and see how these sparks can impact their academic lives. When taught character skills through these research-based core areas, students have a foundation that can help them find success, both in and out of school. We've been working closely with Search Institute to train our staff in these areas and in creating a process by which the language of REACH is embedded throughout all the things we do at East. The core of this character education instruction is advisory. We have a daily 20-minute advisory period. We've had it for about 10 years at East, and although it has and continues to evolve, it has always maintained its primary mission, creating a place where each and every East student feels connected, both seen and heard every day. In a large school, this small group experience with one constant adult can provide stability and security. An example of this could be seen in my own advisory just two weeks ago. I have a student with some significant special needs in my advisory, and her mother shared that she has had some trouble in the past with friendships. So in talking with both this young woman and her mother, we decided it would be a great idea for her to share the details of her medical condition and what it was like for her in school with her peers in our advisory group. She created a presentation, complete with activities devised to help the other kids in our classroom feel what it is like for her every day to learn and master new skills. She even took questions from her class group. And because this time was embedded in our day with the goal of helping students build these developmental relationships, we were able to give this young woman and her peers an opportunity often lacking in school, the time to really learn about each other. A few days later, we went on a team-building field trip over to French Park here in Plymouth, and I was able to see a visible shift in my group. They handled each other's feelings and ideas with more care. They made sure everyone had a partner for all of the activities. They slowed down to be sure that no one was left behind. The R in REACH was clearly illustrated that day. We use this advisory time to explicitly teach the skills necessary for success and growth in school and beyond using the REACH framework. We teach a common vocabulary so that students know if a teacher talks to them about something like using their struggle strategies in math class, the student is already well-versed in this concept because of advisory. The goal is for the advisor to be the primary link to school for student families and also an advocate for students. We also try to guide students to help them self-advocate, both academically and socially. This is often done through one-on-one conferencing and dialoguing through journals. Last year, one of my colleagues had an advisee who was struggling academically. He was an exceptionally bright young man, but seemed unmotivated and disconnected. Through conferencing with this student, she learned he was facing many challenges at home and school just wasn't a priority right then. A core part of REACH is the heart, and we often talk at East about our sparks, those things in your life that make you tick, the things that you do that fulfill you. It took time, but figuring out that this young man's spark was music, she was able to connect with him. He played the guitar, and she had him bring it in and play for his advisory group. She found out he wrote songs, and she explained that this was a form of poetry and a way to express all the things that was going on in his life. It wasn't long before he was smiling in the halls and starting to get back on track. We are working hard at East to help students see that these things they are learning in advisory, things like growth mindset and goal-setting, impact the learning in our classrooms as well. Teachers are beginning to use the language of REACH in their own content areas so that these character strengths become the culture of our school. Honestly, we're not there yet, but as we teach our students, we are all a work in progress and the emphasis is on the yet. Our work with Search Institute continues, and our REACH leadership team of nine very dedicated, passionate teachers continues to work to make this the core of our students' daily experience at East. So while advisory is a time for all students to learn and apply REACH strategies, in any school, some students need extra support to reach their highest potential. So Paula, my colleague, is going to come to talk to you about her class, which is focused on using these REACH techniques with a smaller targeted group of students. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So thanks again for having us here. We're really excited to share this with everybody because we're all passionate about it. And for me, as previously as a social worker and now as a teacher, I've always been passionate about the growth mindset of kids, of that inner strength of really empowering them to look within and see what they're capable of doing, and also to have those experiences of really reaching their potential and then actually surpassing that potential of being surprised by what they can actually really do. That's always excited me as a teacher and as a social worker. Since we look at, to give more explicit instruction in REACH, techniques involve those needing more time and practice in some of the following: discovering their passions, building perseverance, increasing awareness of the role relationships play in enhancing their life, finding motivation through their sparks and passions, feeling more connected in school, developing a growth mindset, building confidence, coping with obstacles that may get in the way of reaching their goals, and then organizing and finding strategies to complete projects. So, looking at- So, looking at the specially-designed classroom, is that Search Institute gave us 20 anchored lessons with activities, so that has been our foundation. And then we've been digging in deeper from those, looking at the five elements of REACH that Rachel had just talked about. So the structure of the class looks like journaling, discussing, team-building, debriefing. It also is like cultural exploration, and then it's also too looking at the day-to-day, going into the classrooms and helping these kids then embed it throughout their day. Just to give you an example, at the end of the relationship unit, one lesson goes into the importance of gratitude and giving thanks to those who have made us who we are today. So one student called his grandpa on his cellphone during class and put it on speakerphone so we could all hear the conversation, and he started by saying, "I wanted to share how I'm feeling about our relationship and how great it is. You are always there for me by coming to all my football games and wrestling matches and helping pay for the equipment. You have made me the best person I can be by teaching me life lessons. You challenged my growth in football and wrestling by setting goals with me, like telling me to set the tone, don't be afraid to make contact, and make sure that they know who you are. You have expressed care by letting me express my true self. I feel more safe and cared for you from you than a five-star hotel. You are five out of five stars, Papa, that is for sure." So grandpa became very deeply moved by this conversation, and the student, who has never had a loss for words, was speechless after this. And so he really talked about how proud he was and how it felt really, really nice, he kept saying. So with this student, it was easy for him to find somebody grateful for. Not all the students in REACH class find what they're thankful for. So I had one girl who, she was adopted and she thanked her mom, or she wrote a gratitude letter to her mom that she's never met. A boy who couldn't think of somebody he was thankful for, so he loved his grandma, who had passed away, and so he wrote a letter to his grandma telling her the person he's become. And a boy wrote to his sister, who's away at college, first realizing how much support and care he got from his sister. So with advocacy, we as teachers were in weekly contact on the academic work. We help students organize their work. We give them more time to understand and complete their work. We meet with teams to wrap support around individual students. So we help students find struggle strategies, which is part of the REACH curriculum, when feeling frustrated with work and how to make it feel more manageable by breaking it down into steps. We increase awareness of how they're feeling and help them make connections between their feelings and actions. We help them change negative self-talk into growth mindset. For instance, we went to French Park, and one student came back and he said, "Oh, I failed miserably." And so we changed that mindset, saying, "It took courage to do what you did. The group chose you to do this. The girl before you made the mistake. She fell into the lava, the make-believe lava. You tried. The group was cheering you on." And so it starts to chip away at that negative mindset to give them a growth mindset. We help them discover their sparks and gain new experiences. We really want them to start advocating for themselves. And then we have students creating and reviewing WOOP goals, which is W-O-O-P, and it stands for, the wish is the goal, the O is the outcome, what would happen if this wish came true? The obstacles are what would be all the things that would interfere with this outcome happening under this goal? And then the plan is the if that. So if this obstacle happened, what would your plan be? So it really kind of looks at that obstacles are just part of life. So then getting into the experiences, we took the students to the University of Minnesota, and so they got to look at their future aspirations, what would it take now to have a successful start in college and then to maintain that success? So before they even went to the university, they had to each research a job or a career that they were interested in, what was the projected income, which for some, that kind of detract them right away, what was the education needed for it, what were the skills? So they went in with all these questions that they could find out more about, and then they left with evaluating, is this what I want to pursue or not? So still opening up those doors for them. We also took the students to Can Do Canines, which is for service dogs, training service dogs, and then each student researched a story of a service dog matched with a person and then presented on how this relationship empowered the person to be more independent. They shared a WOOP goal on how the service dog helped the person and family overcome obstacles, again, to have them be more independent. And then looked at all the relationships of how it helped the families feel more at ease, less stressed, knowing that their loved ones could be more independent and be part of the family more and more. We went on an overnight camping experience. For some of them, it was the first time camping, so it was definitely an eye-wakener to me of not knowing how to put up tents and things like that, growing up with camping, so it was a great experience for them to do that. They had to plan all the activities, all the meals, setting up tents, cleaning up, all of that. It was a great experience for them. And definitely frustrations came about, which was great because that was a learning experience for them. We have guest speakers coming in, talking with them. We had one teacher that had all guest speakers come in throughout the year, and students could choose which person that they wanted to go listen to and hear more about that spark and that passion. We had students interview teachers and parents to find out about their goals and plans and obstacles, and they were blown away by, teachers had it rough sometimes, or they didn't quite get it, or our parents had obstacles they had to overcome. So it really woken them up of, you know, this is part of life, and it all happens. So. So moving forward then, we have this vision that the district has that we're following then, and part of, Dr. Johnson had talked about the vision and the whole plan. So lots of our planning has been on our own, but then we've also had Search Institute a rep come in, and it's all research-based, and he's mentoring leaders within our building to help us meet this vision, and he's giving us guidance on next steps to embed REACH techniques into our day-to-day operations. And with meeting with them and collaborating, we went away with three aha moments where this really makes sense and it's really making us move even more forward. The first one is that it really validated the importance of this work in teaching and practicing REACH techniques for our students to feel connected and have that sense of belonging, that it opens them up to learning and having that success. The second thing that we took away from it is that academics and character strengths go hand-in-hand, that in our advisory, that we need to do both, not just one or the other. And the third thing we learned from them was that our advisory REACH leadership team facilitate ongoing discussions with each team to get their input on how to incorporate these techniques throughout the school building. Our main thing is that we want to keep embedding these techniques and these skills and this mindset throughout the building on a day-to-day operation. So, thank you.
Well, as you can see, we've taken the concept of character strengths and made it a priority at East Middle School and are doing a number of things to try to make that a reality for our students. So thank you for your time tonight, and we welcome any questions or comments that you have at this time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Patesel. Appreciate it. Questions for any of East Middle School? Yeah, Linda?
First of all, I don't really have a question, but I do have a comment, and thank you so much for the presentation. I remember quite a long time ago when our three kids were at East Middle School, which was not named East at the time, and then a couple grandchildren were also at East. And to see how much, it's sort of a growth mindset with the advisory program. I mean, the advisory program seems so important and so real to kids, and when our kids were there, it didn't have that impact and power, so it sounds as though it's a wonderful program, and congratulations on all the work you've done for it.
Thank you. Yes, Andrea, you're up.
Thanks for all the great information. I have a question that you might be able to answer about the overlap between all the work you're doing with REACH, and then you also mentioned that you're a PBIS school. Are you able to kind of use the same language and work on issues using both of those models together?
Yeah, we're very, very pleased at how all of the project teams have evolved to the point where we're seeing the cross-connections between each of them. And so when we start looking at PBIS, which is really how we react with, or how we behave amongst the groups, and how do we treat each other with respect, and then seeing how we can internally use these character strengths and how that transfers into a variety of different settings, they're very complimentary. You start adding that to equity, understanding what biases we carry and how we can start to have that discourse amongst different groups, it all really works well together. And so we are, we often talk about the importance of a framework so that we have a common language, and we see how those languages, the language for each of those frameworks is starting to cross over. And so, yeah, I think it is, I think we're on to a good set of priorities.
Yeah, thank you. It sounds like a great combination.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much. It sounds like a lot of great work. I appreciate you coming in tonight. Thank you very much. Yep. All right, the next item on our agenda tonight is superintendents' reports and recommendations, and it looks like we have a couple of policies. Are those under your heading, Dr. Anderson? Okay, so we have two policies regarding the proposed creation of a new policy 920 and proposed changes to an existing policy 809, and all the information's in your board packet, but I'll turn it over to Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. There are two policies that are in your packet this evening. The first one is policy 920, which is titled Use of School District Facilities and Equipment, and policy 809, which is Authorized Use of District-Owned Materials and Equipment to be in alignment with policy 920. Policy 920 is a newly-created policy for our district use, and as indicated here, it's in alignment with the updated policy 809. So a lot of similarities, but both policies seem to serve our needs better. You may recall that this was in your packet for first review. Last month, there was a request to bring it back to work session and policy committee. That has occurred, and these policies are in your packet tonight. The recommended action is to approve the amendments to school board policies 920 and 809.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve policies 920 and 809 for second reading and final approval, and that we waive the reading of the actual policies here tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, questions? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, the motion passes. Looks like we have no teaching and learning items tonight, so we'll move to finance and business. Mr. Westrom.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tonight, we have two items. The first item is for informational purposes only, so our monthly financial reports are enclosed for your review and information, and the reports as of August 2017, the Student Activity Fund Report, the Investment Summary Report, an analysis of the financial report, a statement of revenues, and a statement of expenditures. And as you know, the board has a finance committee, and we review these expenses on a monthly basis, and at this point, everything appears reasonable.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Westrom. Are there any questions for Mr. Westrom about the monthly financial reports? Okay. Thank you very much. And the next item is yours also.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The next item is a resolution providing for open enrollment non-resident agreement for 2018-2019. And I did want to thank Kristin Tollison, our Director of Administrative Services, who's in attendance tonight, and would be happy to respond to any questions at the end of this discussion. According to Minnesota Statute 124D.03 subdivision 2, a board made by resolution limit the enrollment of non-residents' pupils in its schools or program according to this section to a number not less than the lesser of 1% of the total enrollment at each grade level in the district or the number of districts' residents at that grade level enrolled in a non-resident district according to this section. So as you know, we have chosen to do the 1% of the total enrollment at each grade level in the district, and so our open enrollment guidelines for 2018-19 are before you as close open enrollment at grades 1 through 12, and then in accordance with state law, we'll actually offer and accept enrollment to kindergarten students with a currently-enrolled sibling or with a currently-employed staff person, and we will limit it to the number of students that would satisfy the 1% of open-enrolled students per grade level. So with that, the recommended action is before you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Westrom. So the recommended action is to approve the district's recommendation to close open enrollment for the 2018-2019 school year for grades 1 through 12, and limit enrollment for kindergarten to siblings of existing students and children of employees, as described by Mr. Westrom and as detailed in your board packet. Is there a motion?
I so move and ask that we waive the reading of the resolution, please.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Polzin. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any discussion? I would add that this is an item that comes up every year, and as a consequence, we do spend as a board time during our work session talking about this and the different pros and cons, for lack of a better term. So this is an item that's been well-researched, so thank you, Mr. Westrom and Ms. Tollison as well. Okay, the motion's before us, and I believe we need a roll call vote. Thanks, Ms. Keen.
Bonita Lucky.
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin.
Yes.
Eric Brown.
Yes.
Andrea Keen.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Chair McCullough.
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Keen. All right, our next item, two items are other board action or board reports. Do we have any other items tonight from my colleagues? Okay. And second to last, audience opportunity to address the school board. Do we have anybody here tonight that would like to address the school board? Andrew? All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Aye, so move.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, the Wazada Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting for October 9, 2017 is adjourned.